We have a forum and the agenda was properly posted. Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that is not a specific agenda item. Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Item five is discussion. Consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of August twenty first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve as presented. Any other discussion questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And all abstained, I was not here. One exception. Presentations to the board. Presentation by Horizon Development Group Incorporated. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dan Fitzgerald. I'm the president of Horizon Development Group. About two years ago, some of the partners at Horizon acquired a piece of land which is right across the street. Many of you are familiar with it. Many of you are brand new to the topic. I myself is also, are, is new to this process too because a different partner at Horizon is presenting it in the past. So, I believe what each one of you have is kind of a letter that I kind of assembled and kind of gave an update to the project and also a financial model that Matt asked me to include and should be part of your packet also. But, to give you kind of, if anyone has any questions, please stop us. I did bring with me Kurt Piranboom. He's Horizon's chief financial officer. So, if there's any financial questions on the pro forma model, he was the one that created it. He knows it inside and out a lot better than I. So, I don't know the answers. That's why I brought him as a resource for this. To give you kind of a synopsis, a quick history, that's kind of the first couple paragraphs of the letter, is that we have a general development plan that's been approved or master planned for the entire parcel of land. Two years ago, we were trying to do the project all in one single phase and get it all approved. But, what ended up happening is we couldn't get it financed. It was just too large of a scope of a project for the size of the community and we just couldn't put the deal together. So, that's where the project kind of hit a stall is that it couldn't be done in a single phase. So, now we're here back with what we think is a feasible project after going out and talking to the lending industry of what we think we can put together. So, we're here to present it to you, to get your feedback, to listen to what concerns you may have and see if we can get an opportunity to get some development in addition to the bank building now motivated and going to this pretty highly prominent corner of the community. So, big picture wise, there was one hundred eighty-four units and an eighteen, ten thousand square foot building is the master plan. This phase one is what we think we can put together here would be five eighteen unit buildings for a total of ninety units. You can read here the architectural style on the walk-up. I brought the colored elevation. During the feedback of the previous meetings, it was my understanding the village liked to have a mix of architectural styles and they did embrace this commercial or more urban style up closer to Cottage Grove Road. So, that's why we're kind of proposing, one, we're trying to find opportunities to save money in the cost of the project to make this feasible. So, we're proposing that we do all five buildings with the same architectural style, the same building architecture. The five buildings I'm talking about are the ones that are along Cottage Grove Road. You can see an area here I have marked as a recreational area. For right now, that's a holding spot for a clubhouse, which was in the initial plan. When you only do five buildings, the cost of the clubhouse and the expenses to operate it are unfeasible. So, that is not part of this proposed phase at this point in time. We obviously hope that as we get going, things are very successful and future phases come in a relatively quick pace. But, at this point, that clubhouse is not part of our, what we're proposing here today. I talked about the one building type. That's going to be critical because the cost of architecture will come down with associate to that. I talked about the commercial aspect of it. The other thing with the master plan, we'll have to create CSM lots that each of the project will all fit on. It can be financed in a separate way. But, the overall master plan had certain densities laid out for the entire project when these create lots. Some of the lots may have higher density, some of the lots will have lower densities. We're not proposing any more density or any changes to that plan at this point in time. It just might be variable if you analyze it in a phased approach versus an individual approach. The schedule of what we think we can pull together, if this presentation goes well and you're on board with what we're proposing, is that if we can start the tiffs of, the tiffs of port that the project needs to move forward and get a development agreement in place this year, we would still try to push and get the PIPs in the middle for this year so we could start construction this spring of next year. With that schedule, that would allow us to get a couple buildings. We're anticipating two of the five maybe in service by the end of the year. And then the remainder of the buildings would fall into the following year for completion. Talk about the CSM. I made the note here of future phases. At this time, we're still pushing. We're still looking to get those to be feasible. We're working on them every day. Obviously, when we own a piece of land, it's, and we're developers, we like to develop. So, we're actively pushing it, but at this point in time, they're just not feasible at this stage. Onto really the meats and potatoes of why we're here today and the finding. Does anyone have any questions on the planet? That's first and separate the proposal. I know several of you, if my understanding is correct, are new trustees to the community. So, I'm not a hundred percent familiar how much you understand, comprehend. I can go back, forwards, et cetera for your education purposes, but I assume.
Could you explain that this is the first phase? What would be the next two phases?
The next two phases are, I believe you're asking kind of like the architectural style and what the buildings would look like or?
No, you're talking about a clubhouse being added on.
Yeah, the clubhouse. The clubhouse was originally planned for this area, which is part of, inside this phase, but it's just not feasible at this point in time. The other land that's associated with this development is a future lot here and a future lot here. The master plan shows more of a similar type of housing, but with different architectural styles. It was more of a gabled and pitched roof with asphalt chingles versus the flat roof concept which you see here. And I do have sample buildings that we did show in the first go around that I can show you. Over here, we have, we're working with the parks division and this would be a community park that we would dedicate land back to. That's kind of a parkland dedication section also. And what our vision there is to create a community dog park. That is something we've done at other multifamily developments and it's been very successful. We're finding that more and more households have pets. If you don't embrace the pets, they'll go to a community that will embrace the pets. So, we've, we've made, we've kind of turned this into an amenity and kind of a crown jewel. We think of the community itself. It doesn't have a dog park yet and to have an area where you can have a pet specific dog park around a large detention basin that will be constructed here to handle the stormwater. It's, you know, setting itself up to be kind of a crown jewel of the community.
So, is the dog park part of phase one?
The land dedication for that is part of phase one. The actual construction aspects of that still has some negotiation to do with the park and the park fees that get done and it's back and forth. So, that's, that's still one of those gadgets that we have in details.
Have you pro forma the other item four units that are farther up? Have you pro forma that to see if that makes economic sense?
We have not. As Dan mentioned, we originally had one hundred and eighty-four unit plan. Well, we took it to lenders and they were fearful of adding that many units. We turned it down to ninety. We haven't run the second phase on the ninety-four or ninety units for that second phase.
Let me tell you what my concern is, is that it would appear to me it's going to be more expensive to build the ninety-four up the hill than it is the piece that's down below. And you can't make it work now at seventy-five percent of the increment. How do you think you're going to make the piece on the top work?
There's a lot of variables that go into this. There's, it's obviously a very hilly site. So, there's a lot of site work that is going on right now or in phase one that has to be done in order for phase one to go in. So, the site work costs on phase one are going to be higher than phase two. So, that's one of the areas that we feel phase two might be a little bit less expensive on the site work side. The other variable is, you know, I don't believe that there's these unit types in the marketplace. So, we're hopeful that once these units come online, you know, we can get higher runs for those units and be able to increase value that way.
Explain to me why it's going to be more expensive to move dirt on the first phase and the second phase which is farther up?
The leveling of the site, we probably have to.
Yeah, the way the site is engineered and designed, the entire site will be masqueraded because there's cotton fills where we'll need to be borrowing material and bringing it back and forth. And we'll also have to construct the detention basin.
So, this is getting pulled into the first, so you're pulling costs from the second phase into your first phase and saying that to make your first phase economically viable, you need to do work on the second phase, which is going to lower the cost of the second phase?
This, the, where this first phase is, it's a fill site. So, I have to get material somewhere. So, it's either trucking it in from offsite and paying for it or taking it from this area. So, we've looked at separating those two and making sure that we weren't sacrificing one feasibility for another. But, it's the most cost effective way it is to masquerade this entire site because we're using the material from here to fill in this area because our plan still isn't following the master plan. But, right now, we can only finance ninety-three units of this. So, it makes the most sense to grab the material here versus offsite and to create the detention basin and use the entire site for not having to truck the material, bad material on and off the harness.
Other questions? Yes, the one question I had that the TIF assistance you're asking for, would that be then proportional to as you develop and get that proportion of TIF assistance? In other words, you don't want it all upfront just for partial project? Does that make sense?
Correct. The only TIF that we're asking for right now is only for this phase.
Okay.
We're not asking for TIF at this because we don't have what's actually going to, you know. We have a master plan of what's approved, but we don't have a feasible deal at this point in time. So, yeah, we're here talking about the TIF that we're asking for is only for this first phase.
When do you anticipate the commercial outlot on Main Street eight? Well, it's obviously not part of phase one.
But, once someone comes to me and has an interest of being located there, we'll push it as fast as we can. I've had signs up. I've gotten two phone calls. One was for a car parts store which found a different site and that's probably not the right use for that location. And the second one was for a brew pub and it was a brew pub that's being built out on some curve. So, it was the one that we kind of felt like we were being shocked and used as information only. So, I haven't had a ton of interest there unfortunately. I mean, we're in this together and we're trying to, trying to get it to go as fast as possible. Would love to have it, but it's just a challenge of not getting identified.
It makes sense as soon as you probably have some buildings up and occupants and such that from a business perspective, it makes.
I think it will be more, a more attractive site. It's more and more rooftops.
Yeah.
You know, as I, you know, I've spent more and more time in the community getting an understanding, talking to the business owners, seeing what their emphasis is. I found a common thread is that having housing options is what they want in the community because that's what helps me be in balance and bringing in the jobs and make sure that their employees aren't trapped in great distances. I know Jerry Stotter, he called me out of the blue and asked when the project was going to happen because he's mentioned that he wants to do more of a country market and bring in more of a sandwich color and get more options in one of those levels. But, he's kind of waiting for this. So, I'm, you know, it sounds catchey for a developer staying in front of you and say, this is going to be a catalyst project. But, I think it certainly can help. The more rooftops you have here and the more households and the more consumers you have, it's going to help spur that economic development with the commercial base in the community.
I have several questions on the financials. There's not a lot of detail here. One, what is the second mortgage? Please explain.
The second mortgage that's referred to as the developer TIF. So, how we're seeing this TIF assistance being done is that essentially what we're asking for is a limitation on the taxes that the property pays in. So, if this property is assessed at eleven million dollars generating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in real estate taxes per se, we're asking essentially for that tax amount to be limited to fifty thousand, which provides some additional cash flow for the project so that the project can then go out and get financing from a bank that lends on that cash flow.
However, that's not actually how it will work. You'll have to pay the full taxes and then reimburse that with a FED.
Right.
Okay.
So, what really concerns me, I guess, when I look at your, the way you've laid this out is you're putting a five percent rate in here. How are you calculating your rates on your first and your seconds? I mean, I'm trying to figure this out. When I was trying to work through the numbers here, it doesn't, it doesn't work out because I don't have enough detail. Figure it out.
A five percent interest rate?
Okay, so if I go and look at how you laid it out, if I go back to your information assumptions, you have, for your permanent loan, you have a five percent rate. You have a thirty, thirty year AM, you have a five percent interest rate. I mean, I mean, you have a five-year terms, excuse me. And then I go back and I try to calculate that back through with what you're, what you actually are saying you're carrying for your loan and it doesn't work, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't work out for, from, because I don't have enough detail. I can't figure out how you're doing it.
Right. We didn't include an amortization, a standard loan amortization schedule in the package.
But, you do put it, I mean, I get it, but when I try just to calculate the interest on it, it doesn't work out. I don't have enough information to, it doesn't work out. And I'll tell you where I've had it is, I, when you look at your stack you have here, you're putting in, I'm finding it here. You have, okay, for your first mortgage, you've got, you're coming in at sixty-four percent. Then you're figuring the development TIF and I assume then you're saying you're going to get five percent. So, you're going to discount that back and that's what you think you can borrow on the discounted TIF?
The six ninety-eight.
Right. And then you have the equity you're putting in. And you're doing it on a five-year deal at five percent, which I have a feeling that, I mean, we can't predict what rates are going to be in the future. But, being a CFO, I'm pretty sure you know that you can go out now and you can borrow money way lower than that. If you can't, then I'd like to know why Horizon can't borrow money lower than that.
It's pretty close to that five percent.
Five percent on a five, on a sixty-month loan?
Right.
All right. I would think you'd be more down low fours frankly myself. But, I don't see why you need to, why, I don't see why you can't just increase your debt level up to seventy or seventy-five percent and say, I've got a market rate project that doesn't need to be supported by the public, by, by using public taxes to pay for a market rate housing.
Yeah, I mean, like you pointed out, one of the variables is what the interest rate is going to do. We assumed a five percent rate. That loan isn't going to come into play until the project is completed, so a year and a half down the road. We did use a four percent interest rate on the construction loan piece to, to figure out what the interest carry cost would be during the construction. But, yeah, we don't know what the interest is going to be a year and a half, two years from now. So, we used a five percent rate. We also did a sensitivity saying, you know, what if the interest rates rise to six percent? And we sized the loan at a six percent interest rate to make sure that we could hit a debt cover ratio that lenders would be looking for. So, we kind of did a sensitivity rate that as well.
And that sensitivity rate is being demanded by the lenders. That's something that forces us to get the underwriting process.
I get it, but I do deals all the time that I don't, you better raise the money you guys are getting. I don't get it. I don't get it, especially with the amount of equity you're putting in the deal. How you think you can't do a sixty-month loan at less than five percent? I, I, you know, I know you're looking two years out. But, the reality is if you guys were just, if you guys changed your stack here, I just don't see a need for it. The reason you're getting, you're, you have the need is the way you guys have laid it out with your, with your sources and uses. But, if you flip it back and you actually were actually either increasing your loan amount or you're increasing your, not even increasing your equity. I, I don't see that you, that you need the assistance to do market rate housing. I'm not convinced. I mean, I'm looking just at the numbers you've given me and I'm not convinced of that.
Right. I mean, there's, there's obviously different parts of the capital stack exactly. We've used an interest rate that we think is a market interest rate. If you're doing deals with lower interest rates, I would love to talk to your lender. I would be happy to. I would love to be able to do this deal without any assistance.
Well, then why don't you go out and just, and instead of coming to us and saying you need TIF, why don't you just borrow another seven hundred thousand dollars at five percent, which, which is what you're doing anyway?
Well, we are for a short period of time, but we're able to finance that by the reduced real estate taxes. So, this second loan is essentially paid off by the reduction of real estate taxes.
But Kurt, I think what Mick is getting to is in relationship to what banks are requiring for their underwriting. And Mick, when you say go out and borrow seventy-five percent loan to value, that's not the only underwriting parameter they install in multifamily, multifamily projects. So, as Kurt was describing with the interest rates, and you kind of alluded to it earlier, they're low currently, but what are they going to be five years from now is a wild card. So, what banks are saying is you need to stress your project pro forma up a percentage and a half or a percentage point up to that six-point mark, or was it five-point? Six-point mark. And you still have to hit a debt coverage ratio of one point two. And if you, if your project can't do that, what it means is you have to put more equity into it because it's not hitting that debt coverage ratio. So, that NOI from the rents minus the expenses coming down, can't afford that payment. And that's what banks are doing the underwriting for. So, that's, if, if I could go out on seventy-five, my capital stack would be seventy-five percent. But, this project won't, it just doesn't underwrite that way and I, we can't get it to be there. That's why the butt four test is here and this is why we're saying we need help. Otherwise, we don't have a feasible project. It's just as a.
So, explain to me exactly what the additional costs are that you have in dollars that your competition doesn't have building just down the street.
The additional cost I have is how expensive it is to build on that site.
What I'm saying is?
If you look at our project costs right now, they're over fourteen million dollars. And at the end of it, I'm going to have an asset that's worth eleven million dollars based on what the rents are in the community and what I'm underwriting for. So, to get, to get it going, I'm, I'm out of the gate right now having an asset that's lower in value from what it's going to cost to build there. So, that's why we're here.
That didn't answer my question, though. My question is, any builder that's going to construct right now has to deal with, with, you know, with costs, right? Whatever those costs are. And those costs obviously have been going up. So, how much of this project is not, how much of this project is based upon the actual work that you're doing that another developer down the street wouldn't have to do? Because if we, if we just look at how much it costs to build, everybody's in that squeeze right now, right? Everybody's getting squeezed by, you know, on construction costs. But, that's not a reason in my mind for you to get additional help versus someone else. Explain to me why this site over here is, would cost you more to build on than the site right down the street that built two years ago? I need to understand that because any developer can come in right now and say, you know what? My costs have gone up twenty percent from what they were a year ago because of the bids I'm getting, right? Does that mean they should, each of them should get TIF? What I'm asking for, if we're going to look, when we look at the butt four test here, which we're going to do pretty soon, explain to me on the butt four test, why this parcel of land should deserve something that every other developer and owner of land in Cottage Grove doesn't, shouldn't get? I need to understand that.
And that's what I think I'm trying to communicate is the cost to develop this site is more than other sites that are going forward. If a, if a developer had a site down the street that had the development costs that this one had, it wouldn't be moving forward.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that's why perhaps they're not moving forward.
The sites that are down the street that have these same costs just wouldn't, they would be, have the same financial feasibility issues that we have right now. So, the cost of developing this project is the site work. It's the extreme topography. It's building the large detention basin associated to it. It's having the density that we have here versus more density. Those all are contributing factors to why this project needs financial help.
Any other questions?
You're not answering my question.
Are you talking about a specific project?
I'm talking about your specific project.
Right.
Every project has to deal with the same sort of issues as you're dealing with when they come in. Okay? We just approved Shady Grove, what, two weeks ago? Why are your costs higher than Shady Grove's costs when they get ready to develop multifamily there? Why is this, why is this parcel here just so expensive versus compared to everything else?
Why, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful in this comment. Why hasn't this parcel been developed before? It's your downtown cornerstone. It's been vacant for how many years? I mean, I'm not making this stuff up. I'm not here with smoke and mirrors trying to get rich off of one development and retire at my age. This development is, this site is difficult to develop and it has a lot of costs associated to it. I mean, otherwise, it would have been developed a long time ago. And when I say that, Mick, it's totally not to be disrespectful in the question and not trying to answer it. But, you know, I, I think I answered your question. I answered your question from what we talk about internally in our office and what the costs are in the project. But, I guess I'm here.
How much are you spending in addition to move dirt from one side of the property to the other?
That detail, I don't know that answer.
The John Thode, the business partner, that was presented before, would know that answer with the businesses in the area. So, we don't, I couldn't get that answer, but I'm not prepared to answer that.
Well, I think what helped, help answer his question is why this is costing more than another development in another part of the.
And if you had the financial numbers on that project, I can look at those and compare them side by side too. There might be something that, you know, like all that goes off of that.
Yeah, I think there's about a million, million and a half of just kind of site work costs that are going into this project.
After you do that, after you recreate everything, recreate the retention basin and move the dirt around, what happens to the area that is in phase two? What is that going to look like or seed that?
Yeah, where you seed it and it would have grasses that would be maintained.
What is your gut? I mean, you can't predict the future, but because that, you're not, we're not talking about phase two right now. But, what is your gut say as far as when it would be developed? We're on phase one right now. It sounded like that's about two years, just phase one. And then you're going to try to follow that runway if everything rented?
Yeah, I'm just going to change the word gut to what I'm hoping. What am I hoping happens? That we get underway and we start developing that's very well received in the community based on the businesses and the jobs coming to the community. I'm very optimistic that it takes off and does well. That's why we acquired the piece of land. That's why we're here is we lead a lot here to community. We want to invest in it. We want to be part of it. So, I'd like to get up. I'd like to get going, get leasing going, marketing going and, you know, work with the financing industry to say, if we hit certain benchmarks, I want to be able to propose phase two and come back in front of you again with part, with phase two. That's the, that's the path I'm hoping for. And then as more rooftops come, then that commercial component comes. And how you get something commercialized that's attractive for the neighborhood and is something better than a car parts store.
Any other questions or anything from staff?
I have some thoughts on this. Debate about the appropriateness of TIF financing or funding usually comes down to the butt four test, which is what we really should be looking at this evening. And that test is very simple. If the development would have occurred without subsidy, it should not receive, you know, any sort of public assistance or. assistance or TIF. Only when a TIF-funded project will create development that the market is unable to provide, should it really, you know, be using public funds to make it, make it occur. That's really the butt four test. You know, if you don't, if it would, if you would, if you're going to have, if the market can provide something, then you shouldn't be giving TIF for it. That's the butt four test. An example would be if we were putting affordable housing in here and we, and really there wasn't affordable housing in other areas of the village and we felt there was a need for it, that might be a reason for doing it. Or if there was a need for more retail or downtown square, something like that that we really felt strongly about and there wasn't really, that need wasn't being met, then I think you've met the butt four test. So I have, when you start looking at TIF, I think you can make, you can, I think you have to look at more than just the project as reported. Because if you always focus on the project before you, you're missing out on what I think is, is the community as a whole and really whether the market as a whole and the community really will provide the use or the need. So I have, I have three questions really for staff tonight. One is have other multifamily projects occurred in the village without public subsidy? That's my first question. My second question is, are other non-subsidized multifamily projects planned or being proposed within the village? And my third question is, under the comp plan, how much of the village housing is currently planned for multifamily residences? And the reason I'm asking for that is really to get a sense of really what the marketplace is current, where we're at in the marketplace here in the village of Cottage Grove.
We can answer that. First, thank you to Mick. You know, sometimes a time crunch, but, you know, just, just for the board's information, Mick gave Aaron a heads up on these questions. We were able to pull it together before the meeting. So thank you, Mick, for doing that.
Yeah. So first question, are there multifamily projects without public subsidy? Just to flip it around, the only one that we're aware of that got a subsidy would be the Houston development, the 1855 building. I'm not sure to what extent that extends to the other senior projects in there, but any other multifamily would have been not TIF assisted. As far as question number two, are there non-subsidized multifamily projects being planned or proposed? You know, nothing that's concrete to a site plan level. Shady Grove has a parcel allocated for multifamily. To get the number of units they want, they're going to have to go to either a planned unit development or conditional use permits. There's a few steps before they can get to building there, but that's certainly where they're headed. We put concept plans together, kind of rough concept plans together when we did the urban service area amendments. The Hamburg-Jensen amendment we did back in 2016, that included about 50 units. The concept for that area, this is the 200-plus acres north of Glacial Drumland, less dense on the east, more dense on the west. They're going to start on the east, so the 50 units is probably later in the project, but that was allocated to that area. The other areas that got urban service area lately, Hugland and Reed Nelson wouldn't have multifamily, some duplex possibly, and Reed Nelson may not merge a multifamily. Question number three, under the comp plan, how much of the village housing is currently planned for multifamily? I don't have a specific number in there that I can pull out, but I kind of did a little bit of math based on the amount of land in the urban service area that's allocated toward planned neighborhood, the ratio of multifamily we expect in there. I came up with about 200 units, you know, in the outlining area. The remainder of Houston's project, I would estimate maybe four 20-unit buildings, then maybe another 20 units of mul, of mixed use if they kind of extended the 1855 idea. So that's 100, so we're up to 300. And then the other area that we'd be getting it is this area here. So if we round up to 200 across the street and maybe another 50 in various redevelopment projects around here, that got me up to 550. But if you combine that with all the non-multifamily units, and that's about 2,000 units, which is well above the projected, even the high end of the projected growth rates that the school district had in their studies, so I'd probably dial that back to more like 250 to 400, at least, over 20 years.
Thank you, Aaron.
If I could make one more comment, I guess, I would, I would encourage you to think of it differently and think of it as the opportunity that's there. You know, the butt four test, if we don't get this TIF help, it's going to remain as-is right now because I don't have a feasible deal to cover. So as-is, you're getting 2,350 a year in taxes. That's the revenue you get from a parcel that is in your village limits, has services to it, and is a perfect way to increase your tax base, but it's sitting very underutilized. And in the letter that I gave you, the analysis after a 10-year time period, it's going to generate, if our projections are correct, 950,000 in taxes. So that's a net difference, you know, a substantial amount of money over a 10-year time period. That's what the catalyst does. That's not even counting, that's just phase one. If we get going, phase two should come, phase three should come, other projects should happen in the area, and that's just more tax generation and tax base. So to me, it's more the butt four, and you're, and you're looking at this TIF as this is money that you're, you're giving to us. And yes, it is. It's real estate taxes that we pay in, you give a portion of it back to us, we go out and get a loan to help fill the financing gap for it. You know, so it's, it's a great incentive and a great tool to get things going here, and if it doesn't happen, I'm back to the, to the trucker here trying to figure out what to do and what to propose next. And every year, we delayed, we lost a year because of, you know, the unfortunate, the whole single-phase thing, and that we lost 197,000 or 263,000 or plus in taxes for the community. You know, we're, we're in it. We want to get development going. We want to pay real estate taxes, and I know many of you guys write on platforms of get taxes down in economic development. So I encourage you to think more along those lines. Is this project going to help with those caveats and be a positive for the community?
I just have a couple financial comments. Certainly depending on how direction moves forward, we can get some different draft performance from the village's perspective to you all. But based on what Horizon submitted here and incorporating that with the current obligations of TID six, that construction with the timing of how construction and assessments and payments for incentive would happen, you'd have construction of that, of those initial buildings in 2018. Those would be assessed in 19, and then at 75% of, of the tax reimbursement, about $80,000, that would happen in 2020. And then as the rest of the development phases in, there would be five years eligible for additional payments. The TID, under its current timeline, closes in 2025. However, the village will be eligible for two separate three-year extensions, but those don't, those only factor in the village obtaining more revenue from this. It's not for additional incentive money. So...
So Matt, when I understand that correctly, if you did the extension, what you're trying to do is capitalize on the increment that this district creates for those extension years, because you shared your taxes with the county and the school board, and that portion would still come back to you for those extension years, correct?
Yeah, correct.
That's why the community would want to do the financial numbers and consider the expansion of that TID district for the, the extra two, three-year extension.
Yeah. So with, without the extension and moving forward, if this deal as presented was implemented, the TID would be under cumulative whole through its life at about $900,000. With the extensions, it would be in the positive by 450,000. So that, that's what the outcome would be. And those extensions would essentially be, one of them is based on just a pure audit of the district, and if it can meet its obligations, were, were, by law will be granted that. So that, that's all but a guarantee. And then the other one is called an adverse impact extension, and that was due to, basically, what's in the law is the state, when they changed, when they changed M A T Cs, how their, how their tax rate was functioned into tax increment districts, that adversely affected many tax increment districts around the state. So most are eligible for that through your extension. And Craig Johnson, our financial advisor, said that we'd be eligible for that as well.
I have one question. Have we, has the village ever approved residential for TIF without having a commercial component also in the project that was part of that TIF request?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either. I think this is the first request we've ever had to subsidize residential market rate development using TIF. I think it's something we have to really think about, whether that's something we should be doing. Should we be getting involved in the marketplace and subsidizing a market rate development when we already know that there's 550 units that could be built right now in the near future here in the village?
Anything else? Can you hear the questions? Thank you. What's the next step then, as far as considering this or doing it?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I guess just any direction from the board to staff on any, really just any direction.
Because this, a bit of a change, it does not have to go back to the plan commission? It would stay at board level?
The plan commission's approved the site.
Right.
The plan commission and the board have approved the site.
Okay.
So it really just comes down to, right now it's really the financial request from Horizon that they're presenting. And, you know, it's on here as a presentation tonight, so it could come back on the next agenda as a more formal discussion.
Great.
Mick, you had mentioned that there was, you know, financial stuff that needed more details on more information that you would like to see. Is that something you guys would be able to work with Mick on to, to provide?
Definitely.
To see if there's anything else that could be done to improve?
Yeah, definitely. We can, we can provide that information.
I'm fine with putting it on the next agenda for discussions. Consider we can get our information that we need and things like that. Any other thoughts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On to new business. Discuss and consider sound amplification permit for Andy Laduke at 309 Southern Grange. And I don't think there was any objections from, well, police chief isn't here tonight, but any comments or questions on that? Okay? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the sound amplification permit for Andy Laduke at 309 Southern Grange.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes. Discuss and consider operator license application for licensing year July 27 through June 2018 for Catherine Manzo and Jessen Strawberry. From the look of the packet, it looks like the police department is okay with those. Any comments, questions? If not, I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
Second.
Okay, second from Jim. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes. Thank you. Item C is discuss and consider approval to authorize village staff to take all required action to complete the sale of 308 North Main Street. As you know, we have an offer on the property, and I'll let me talk about that.
Well, this follows our, our regular procedure, although this was a little bit out of the regular process in the sense that when I sat down to do some drafting, I saw that the lot that had been investigated by the title company didn't belong to us. So as I, as I tried to grab my chest and not go down, I thought, how do I explain to the board that the Houston's may not want to sell this piece of property? And it just was, just crazy. So anyway, with Lisa's assistance, we verified everything, and indeed, we do own the lot, and we have gotten the title policy or the title commitment, and they've cleared up the, that issue. They did say to me, is it important that you get something revised? And I said, yeah, I'm old-fashioned about those things. So anyway, yeah. So anyway, what this is, is a, it's a resolution to, the title companies will request some proof that the board has approved the sale, and with, often with the village president's schedule, he asks to have someone, he or she has asked someone to have the power of attorney to execute the, the documents. We've done this with the title, several title companies in town. So with the authorization of the board, then we would, you would pass the resolution and Jack and Lisa would execute the, the documents.
Is that okay with everybody, with the operative of the pack?
Yeah.
So you need a motion to authorize village staff and create action to complete the sale of 308 North Main Street.
Correct. North Main Street.
North.
That's North Main Street. Okay, so trial is second. Okay. All right, motion in the second then to approve the resolution authorizing village staff to take all required action to complete the sale of 308 North Main Street. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. We're down to reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Law enforcement committee, we met, let me see, it was the 29th. Chief is not here, but I think everybody knows that they actually did finally catch that drive-by shooter. Yep, because he tried the same thing and still came back for more. Otherwise, and then we're going to start talking about the police budget. And our next meeting is going to be September 26th. Okay, joint fire department committee?
We spent most of our time discussing the agreement between the municipalities and the fire protection services organization, the volunteer fire department books. The agreement is 20 years old, so we adjusted some, proposed some language, and then asked the director of legal staff members from both the town and the village to get together and, you know, update that agreement according to statute, according to the agreement, the suggested items that we could get that drafted for us to review at our next meeting. The other item we discussed was looking at accepting the, the bid to construct a couple offices within the building. Within this year's budget, there is enough sufficient amount of money to do that, as well as do a few little bit of landscaping items up in front by the sign that a number of the items have since died and been some. So we have a volunteer organization lined up. The Lions will be doing that for, for us sometime this fall, whenever those plants come in, and it's very minimal cost.
All right.
Anything else?
Finance and personnel committee, there's, on the item is a discuss and consider resolution 2017-15. This is dissolving the 201 cable TV fund and uncommitting the fund's balance and assigning the fund balance to Fund 410 for the purpose of capital expenditures. We did talk with, for Millers, the guy at Millers, I think.
Actually, Baker Tilly, our, our auditors, yeah, they, they reviewed, well, first of all, the request for greater flexibility, and they outlined the process of how to do that, and that's what's outlined in this resolution. They've also reviewed the resolution and approved it, and the committee is recommending approval unanimously. Essentially, what it, what it comes down to is the dissolve the cable TV fund 201, that cable TV budget and would still, would operate essentially as it is, but it would just be in the gen, it'd be part of our general budget, and we would... of our general budget. And we would still utilize cable franchise fees to fund that. It would, it would just be a general revenue instead of directed to that whole fund. So it'd still be a self-funding department. It would just be in general government.
Sure.
And then the fund balance that accumulated, you know, because the cable TV fund hadn't needed the total revenue that was being utilized or allocated per year, which was $48,000. It ended up accumulating to approximately $360,000. That would now be committed to Fund 410, which is our cable, our capital fund. And it would be approved as part of the financial management plan and it would be part of that balance that's planned to be paid down over the course of five-plus years. And that's $360,000. That would be added to the cable fund, sorry, capital fund. This also provided, provided us with an opportunity to do a little archaeological digging. And we were able to find some very old franchise agreements. When we first started, the agreement was actually between the village and town with the cable company. And then digging a little bit more, we were reminded that in 2008, the state took over, phased out existing municipal franchise agreements by prohibiting their renewal. So the state becomes kind of the franchising authority. But we also checked that language to make sure there weren't any impediments to being able to do what, what you're doing tonight with the, with the fund.
Any questions, Lee? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve that resolution 2017-15, dissolving the Fund 201 and assigning it to Fund 410 for capital expenditures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Public Works and Properties Committee.
Jack, can you just, mind if I take a step back? Just a couple other items from the finance committee. I said on front of view, just for information purposes, the timeline for the budget process for this year. At the, at the last finance committee meeting, the financial management plan, the update of that was discussed and that will come to the board at the next meeting to be discussed further. So Craig Johnson from Ellers will be here to talk about that. And then the finance committee will be meeting again on October 10th to go through the recommended budget that will come from both Jack and myself, as well as each individual committee and department head. And then that'll be compiled and passed along to you all, hopefully on October 16th, which will give you a week and a half, a couple of weeks to review it prior to the budget workshop on October 30th. And for one time in the last six years since I've been here, we've needed a second, a second day, so hopefully we don't. But if we do, we usually try to just do that again the next night if possible. So that's why there's a alternate or a second meeting date if needed for the 31st. And then there's a 15-day notice period by law where we have to publish the, publish the budget, make it available to the public to review prior to a budget public hearing, which will be on November 20th. And then following the public hearing at that same meeting, the board could adopt the budget. And then we have to get the tax bills out by mid-December.
Okay. Any questions for Matt on that? Looks pretty well laid out. All right, Public Works and Property?
Okay, so we met on Tuesday, two days ago, actually. Under old business, we discussed the cell phone plan, just updates there. Mike had indicated we're just about a couple weeks behind. So that moved up, improved from being about a month ago, we talked about it, we were a month behind. Primarily behind because of the amount of rain and such that we've gotten. But the budget looks in good shape between that project and the one that's going on. Folks drive through with the lights at school road there, which is also on this list. And we did have to replace the asphalt in, on Bonnie Road. Whoever did it for it did do a good job. So that, but again, budget-wise, we're okay because we saved elsewhere in the project. Sidewalk repair, JJ updated us on that. It's done for the year. A number of sections of sidewalk were replaced, including some that weren't on the plan, but we're just in dire need and so we're done. And JJ continues to move from section to section for our plan to get everything up to stuff in the next few years. So then we can start all over again, I'm sure. But at least we have a plan. It's going good. I know because I run on a number of those streets, the sidewalks, so it's improving every time I go out. I mentioned the school road update that's progressing. The underwork there is being done. And we're just, the big holdup perhaps may be actually just getting the lights. We're working through the city of Madison to do that. And so we're still not quite sure, Mike wasn't quite sure on exactly when they'll come in. But the stop signs seem to be working for the time being. And folks are able to get through there.
John, do you mind if I interject something?
Certainly.
Larry had asked me about ownership of our street lights and the arrangement with the city of Madison. And so the village owns the traffic lights, but the city of Madison, with most neighboring communities, they provide maintenance as, as needed. So we're the owners and then we just, you know, they come in as needed to make fixes. So.
Okay. The last old business item was conservancy court wetland. We found out, there was a question about a concrete wall, small wall right before it goes into the outlet, was put in place. We figured, figured that out through the permits and everything. It looks like that can be taken down about 18 inches when, once we do the scrape there. We are out of compliance in one of the permits through the Army Corps of Engineering, so that'll have to be updated or re-requested through there. The D and R one is still in place. Then we moved on to new business. Had a presentation from some of the engineers at Shady Grove, talked about some of the road issues, including bus road, and approved, working with Dane County to get it, what's called creating a deferred assessment to address bus roads, to beat. And then the deferred assessment would be on the property once it's developed across the road from Shady Grove. There was a bit of doubt in minutia almost, which JJ probably likes, just the proportion of asphalt on the trail versus the road versus a number of things. Those, those details were discussed and Mike captured those requirements approved by the committee. And then I spent a bit of time discussing the public works budget for 2018. Draft budget was approved with a couple different versions or a couple different scenarios that JJ put together for consideration. So that's out there as well and we'll all see that very soon. Engineer report, most of that was covered in Director Porter. JJ, is there anything else I missed? I want to spend a ton of time on this, but.
For Dr. Bean.
Okay. Thank you. Emergency government committee?
We met last night, discussed some about the 2018 budget and we've gone ahead and purchased, just waiting for it to arrive, a TV with a DVR, which we can hook a computer into and in the event of an emergency or whatever, we can kind of see what local media is doing and that kind of thing. Also talked a little bit about next year's budget and it looks like it's probably going to be the same of a $750, $750 from both the, each town and village. We also discussed the full-scale exercise, which has been scaled back a little bit for a week from the Saturday of the 16th. We're all to meet at 7:00 AM at the, at the fire station up in the main conference room. And the actual event is going to start at 8 o'clock. They've moved it from the east side of Highway N to the west side of Highway N at Hydrate. Going to, I think, position things on, on progress there across from the public works building. They're going to have some signage, just letting people know that it's, it's, you know, an exercise. But 911 will actually dispatch fire and just like we're doing a real event and every so often they say this is again, an exercise. So again, important for all of us to be there and experience what it is and see what, where we're doing well and where we have deficiencies to improve in case there is a real event.
Troy, could you just fill in our conversation about looking at the emergency government ordinance?
I'm sorry, was that Lee?
The, can you let the board know what we've talked about with the emergency government ordinance and working with the county?
Yeah, so you're in the process of reviewing some of the ordinances in relation to, in case we have to make emergency purchases that, that we're not, we're following the state statutes, not the local statutes, make sure that they, they align rather than we make a purchase and then it's not allowed through the village. It's really a paperwork detail, isn't it, Lee, more than anything?
Well, I guess it's kind of changed as, what we found out was that this was supposedly going to be the town attorney and myself working on this together. And then the direction from the town has been somewhat less than specific for the attorney to do this. So I'm going to talk to her when she gets back next week and just say, you know, look, I'm certainly willing to share the load with you, but, you know, we're not going to take this on completely ourselves. Just a couple of things. I went to the, the web E O C, Emergency Operations Center training that the county held on a new computer system. It's pretty, pretty straightforward, easy to, easy to use. They, they haven't fully implemented yet, so they're, you know, it's, they're still ironing, ironing out the, you know, issues, but it's, it's a pretty, pretty good system overall. And then we'll have the staff that'll be available for that full-scale study. We'll, JJ and I will be there at least, you know, four or five hours in the, in the morning. And then we'll have, Chief Labor's going to be out of town, but Lieutenant Wagner will be, will be present as well. So I believe that's the village staff that'll be present. I'm not aware of others that, there are, both the clerk and treasurer will have certain duties in an emergency, but for this kind of operation, they're, they wouldn't necessarily need to be at the E O C. So anyway, that's, that's the plan.
I guess the other thing I will mention is, was going to be an all-day event. Now it should be over about lunchtime. So.
Okay. Do you repeat the time with that? It's at 7:00 AM for the emergency governance?
I'm sorry, what was this?
The, the exercise.
The, we meet there at 7:00 AM and state emergency government will go over a few things about the exercise, but we probably won't be activated closer till 8:00 AM though.
All right. Reports from village officers. Troy?
No report.
Mick?
No report.
Okay, Forrest?
No report.
James?
No report for me. But Aaron, if you wouldn't mind, it's your turn, talking about that meeting that you had regarding the bike trail coming into town. If you could touch on that, I'd appreciate it.
All right.
No report.
John?
No report.
All right, I have nothing. So Lee?
No report.
Hey, Matt?
Just one item. You may be contacted. There have been a handful of complaints about a pig in the village.
A pig?
Yes. And it's not allowed in a residential area, so it's being taken care of. But we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on it first, but.
Is this a pot-bellied pig?
It's not. It's a pig of interest. If it's of interest, well, this is the pig of interest.
Pig of interest. Okay.
It's limited to that.
All right. Aaron?
Yeah, we had that kickoff meeting a couple of weeks ago. Sean and JJ and myself were there. It was mostly introductions, some of the history of the project, little overview of some of the outstanding issues and a little bit about the schedule. The next step for us, the consultants coming to meet with village staff here on the 27th to talk about potential routes through the village. Before anything gets decided, we'll have them come here to get your feedback on that. So probably sometime October, November. It sounds to me like they want to kind of figure that out by the end of the year. They're going to have about two years of design and all their environmental studies and all the stuff they have to do. And then on the schedule, they want to build it in 2020.
2020. JJ?
Cool.
All right. Communications and miscellaneous business, consider approval of vouchers. Any comments, questions, corrections? Okay. If not, I'll move approval of vouchers as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Correspondence, I didn't see anything official this week other than stuff in my mailbox that I keep forgetting. Future agenda items, I guess we could put the Horizon proposal on there and then make sure that they get anybody else's information or maybe they should.
They'll get, they'll get.
Funnel it to the staff.
Money.
Okay. We all have that information.
Mick's got a question.
Yep.
What concerns me is that when we start looking at TIF, we do not have any goals. We don't know where we're headed. I mean, we have projects that come forward like this, but we don't have any criteria. We don't have any goals. We don't have any vision. And, and that really concerns me, especially when you start looking at something that can have some real economic impact on the remainder of the community when you start publicly subsidizing market rate housing versus other market rate housing that may be sitting there running, wanting to go. I, I think that's something we should think about, not only with TIF, but other areas of our ordinances and code, is that we have, we have what's necessary, but we don't have any need on a lot of it. So when, when we get, when we have items that come before us, a lot of it's going to flow right up to us, I think, because staff doesn't have any criteria to really start to work through some of this at, at the staff level. So we end up, like what we had here tonight, we end up, this coming right to us. I can guarantee if you're going through most, not most, but many other jurisdictions, this would have been vetted out way before it ever got to, to the decision makers. And, and so we end up having a lot of discussions about things that we don't have our experts really involved in, I think, because there's no criteria given to our experts to look at it. So that, to me, that's something we might want to think about.
I'll add, Mick, we do have some TIF guidelines that should get out to the whole, the entire board that, you know, maybe Jack was involved in the creation of those, but they are very broad. It doesn't say, you know, this type of project at this amount of increment or this amount of, this many employees would get such and such like, like Madison does. But, but we do have that, but yeah, it doesn't necessarily help us narrow, narrow something down as much. It does, it does give us the ability to request that a perform on analysis is done, that the developer has to pay for, that our financial advisor then does. So Ellers will break that down. So that's something in addition to this that we can request of Horizon that they would have to pay for. But quite taken that, you know, we could, that could be a future discussion, maybe recommended from finance committee or even the C D A. Because there's been some discussion at the C D A, at least for a future TID, that within a certain TID, new TID district, that an initial incentive kind of evaluation of an application would happen there. But, but yeah, it would be good to have something for staff to, you know, at least for that first barrier, the first threshold to get through the process.
I, I also heard tonight the chairman about us being creative so that we can get that property across the street moving so we can, the village can start receiving a nice tax base from. So, and I agree with you, Mick, in regards to public funding of private contractors. But at the same time, funding of private contractors. But, and at the same time, it's, you know, it's, what can we do to be creative to help that develop, any developer off, especially in this case, because that's land that's sat there for a long time.
And, and of course, we've got that deficit of $900,000. That, that is, in my mind, that's one of our, our goals, is to make that go away right before the end of that TID district. I don't want the, the village to have to pay for that, right? You don't want it either. We work hard to save a few thousand dollars here and there. That's $900,000.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
However, you can make arguments that the only reason it's not feasible is because they paid too much.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
The only reason it's not feasible is because they're not efficient. The only reason it's not feasible is because their financial stack doesn't really show reality.
They painted themselves in a corner and.
And all those things.
They painted ourselves in a corner by building up that intersection, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, but that's, to me, that's not a reason, that's not a reason for us to do something that's, that in 50 years is still gonna be there and that could cause other developments that are, that are out there that would, there's only so much development that you're gonna have in a certain segment, just the way it is.
Yeah.
And if we get into the position of going out and starting to subsidize development, why shouldn't we subsidize every other development that comes in that has to put in detention facilities, has to move dirt, has to do all the things that they're saying? And that's what troubles me. I can tell you, to have a project that's purely residential is hard, it's a hard sell in my mind. I just don't get it.
Yeah.
There has to be some, what is the butt for test?
Especially being so central in the community.
What is the, when you look at the butt for test, the butt for test really should be beyond that little specific piece of dirt that you're talking about. The butt for test is, would that happen? Will that development really happen in your community unless you give them the money? And my concern is, is we get so focused on a, on a issue we have here, that we forget that if someone else builds down the street, we're gonna get all the increment off that without having to give away public funding to make it work. If they were bringing in.
But are we giving it away if it, if it doesn't?
If we.
If it's only worth that.
If we put 90, 90 units there.
Yeah.
And the market will only bear 100 units in Cottage Grove in the next year, that means someone else didn't pull the trigger, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know about that, though. I, I think that we not only compete against other areas in Cottage Grove, but we're competing against Sun Prairie and Madison.
Absolutely, we are.
So, so in that respect, the people that are gonna be working at Summit are gonna live somewhere and a lot of them are gonna live in Madison, you know?
There's a lot that goes in that. If you calculate out how much they're spending per, per square foot to build their buildings versus other buildings that are going up, I have a hard time seeing why they need it, why they need it. Just figured out.
Well, they wanna grab it because it's, it's, it's on, they're, they own the land and it's in a TID, right?
It's in the TID, so you ask for the money.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
Yeah. We don't have to give them all, we don't have to give it all to them, but.
That's what troubles me about it. If the, if the, if the retail piece was there, I would see the butt for. When you look at, this was a mixed, this was a mixed development when it initially came in. If you look at TID six, right? You look at the land that's actually available in there for, for commercial use and that. When it came in, that land wasn't designated for what it was going to be. If we had designated all that for all the residential that's currently there now, wow, I mean, this would have been basically a residential TID, you know? And you, you don't do residential TIDs. So, unless you're doing it for affordable housing or some other butt for test, right?
Yeah.
And so what we have is, we really have a market rate residential TID. And, and we haven't seen any, have we seen any, any, any commercial development in this TID other than what we've done? We haven't. And what's the chances of us getting it? I don't know. So we end up spending all this money to have a residential market rate TID, which to me is.
Just to pick up on what, something that Mick said, what Mick is saying is, let's say that you decide to provide assistance for them, then what do you say to the next developer just down the street who says, well, I got a tough site too?
Yeah, but that isn't in the TID though.
Well, why don't we set up a TID?
Set up a district.
Why don't we set up a TID? I mean, come on.
I mean, it, it could be. And that, the, the issue really is, if you decide to do it with, for them, what are you gonna say to the next group? And then the other.
Well, we, we've crossed that bridge a long time ago. I mean, like, the, the building that forgot about the business that's going in, one that's right next to the airport, right? That we gave them a lot, right?
But let's think about what we, what we get out of that. One, it really fits more in, I think, to what we're trying to do, which is economic development. So when you start looking at jobs, if we were doing, if you were doing this deal in, in Madison, Madison would give you, I think it's $35,000 per job that you create. If you just go down the jobs.
$35,000?
$35,000 job.
I can't read.
No. That's what you would get in TID, right? So, I think it's $35,000.
I was reading, I was reading that, that, that Foxconn was $15,000 and usually states give about $2,500 per job.
Yeah, but we're talking about TIF though.
Okay.
So I mean.
I guess that's.
Some jurisdictions, some jurisdictions, you look at it from the economic standpoint, I need it, like they're in here tonight. Or, like in Madison, they do it both ways. You can go in and you can say, I need it because economically I need it, need it to make it work. Or, I, I have a, I, under the criteria, I have a right to it or I should get it because I'm creating these new jobs. And so they're willing to base it on that, so.
But we could have sold them that lot, that was next to our, our village building, you know, the, the lot, you know? They haven't even bought this lot yet, so I don't know.
It's, I'll tell you what troubles me is that if there was a resident, if there was a retail component to this, I get it, because they're taking real risk on retail component.
Yeah.
If they were, if they were doing something other than just slapping up surface, surface parking, if we were in a knee, like we were in, and we were doing urban development where you have to put parking in the ground, where you're looking at very expensive parking or the city, where the village has to create it because somewhere, people have to park somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, so you give, you give, you give TID, TIF funds, the butt for test, I think, is what we have to keep in mind. If we get away from the butt for test, all we're doing is just giving money away with no basis for it, because this whole thing was set up. When it was, when it, when this plan was approved, this plan had to be approved because it met the criteria for the butt for test. That's what everyone from the, from the village with its ordinance on through the process of getting it approved, the butt for test was what was important.
So, do you believe, to answer that question of butt for, is, do you believe Dan is bluffing? That he will go ahead and do the development anyway if, if we don't give him this money?
I don't, I don't care whether he's bluffing or not.
Well, that does matter.
No, no, it doesn't. I'll tell you why. Because the butt for test is when you look and you see, would this development happen without this? And if I.
He says it won't.
I don't care what he says.
He says it won't.
I'm looking at the whole community and I'm saying, in the whole community of Cottage Grove, the village, will this not happen if we don't do this?
But only one person owns it.
No, no. Think about all the, you've got 550 units in this village that could be built, right? We, we should be looking.
Well, more than that could be built.
We're looking.
I don't see why you're putting a limit on that.
I'm not putting any limit. What I'm saying is, when we do the butt for test, we shouldn't be looking specifically at the piece of property that's sitting right in front of us. We need to be looking at the community itself and, and say, but for this in our community, will we get this many units in the next 10 years or five years or two years? When you're looking at TIDs, you're probably, you're looking at 20 some years. Will this happen in 20 some years, right? Not, not because of this. Because otherwise, what you end up getting into is every time someone can't make it go, they think they should get money, right? Like, like out here, we have by the interstate, the building has been sitting vacant for, for, I don't know, 10 years, right?
Crazy, yeah.
There was some discussion back, remember, there was discussion about, well, should we give TID for that? Should we give TID for that building there? Well, that building probably makes more sense than this over here to do that. That's economic development there. But, 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 but we didn't do that. We didn't.
No.
We didn't say, no, we're not gonna, we're not going to subsidize retail development there, right? Which retail development, in my mind, makes a whole lot more sense than market rate housing. You know, what troubles me about what I'm hearing here is everybody's saying, we got ourselves into a mess, so therefore let's just do it. Versus if we say, we don't do it here, but the developer up the street does it and builds 100 units, puts it on the tax rolls, how much increment do we have? Because what we're looking at is not just this. When we're putting all our money together, it's coming from the entire village. The more, the more funds we have growing, coming in from the village, that money can still make up these, these expenses. It doesn't have to come just out of this TID. So what we have here is we have, we have a problem. We have someone that says, yeah, I can fix it for you, but I, you know, I can pick apart these financials every which way, okay?
Yeah.
I can, you know.
Even their bottom line, you could say, all right, you don't need this rate return, right?
But you can pick, you can pick it apart.
Right.
Do they, could they really not go out and borrow another $700,000 and make this project look like they really wanted to do it and, and make it work economically for them?
And Dan is saying.
Well, they should show us that. But, but that's not really my concern. My concern is that we're getting involved in trying to affect the entire Cottage Grove development community on, on multifamily housing by saying, we're gonna subsidize one here, so the guy up the street who has to do the same sort of thing, they have to put the same, we're not even putting any infrastructure in over there. All they're doing is moving dirt and building a detention facility, right?
Yeah.
And they're not, and the parking they're putting up is as cheap as you can put up on the, on the site. It's not underground parking. There's nothing going on here that's extraordinary. I, I don't get it. If I was in their shoes, I'd ask for the same thing, right?
Worried about the.
But I'm not in their shoes. I'm sitting here, you know, thinking about the village itself and whether this is, whether this is appropriate thing for us to start picking and choosing who's gonna be a winner and who's gonna be a loser. And that's why I'm saying, what makes your development different than the guy down the street? Tell me, tell me why you.
Well, do you wanna ask them? Do you wanna get creative and ask them for something? That, ask them for a, a better, I mean, we've got this, I know the overall development plan is in place, but do we wanna ask them for a public square or something that would add value to the community that would enhance that? I mean, thinking out of the box.
I'd love to do that, but I think we're, prior boards have already set the framework for this.
Uh-huh.
I think that's unfortunate. I think.
Right, but that's why I'm saying, that's why we say, that's why we have to do it, because they've set up the framework.
I think, I could be wrong, but I think all we can do now is say, you know, your deal was you're gonna do X, Y, and Z. The deal was you're gonna not only put the, put the cheapest piece in frankly along here, but you're gonna also do the, the commercial piece.
That was part of the deal.
That's part of the deal. Now the deal's not that. No, I'm gonna put this up and in 20 years, that may never happen. And if it does, it isn't gonna be me. I mean, that's what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah.
And that's what really troubles me about the deal, you know?
Yeah.
I, I know, I see a lot of residential development that's done, but there's, there's always something else going on with it. There is a retail component that, that the city or village wants, or there's additional parking that this village or city would have to build. You know, there's some reason, there's some basic reason for doing it. And when I look at this one, I don't see it. I don't see that there's something that they have to do that every other developer that comes in wouldn't be required to do. And if there is, then they bought a piece of dirt that they probably shouldn't have bought.
Right. And then, so do we go back?
And just so you know, that, that is kind of what happened, is that they closed on it and they didn't have their approvals and that, and we still can't figure out.
Why?
Why they did that.
And, and I guess.
And the price is the price. I mean, they've, now, you know, now they're building that in as it, as if it's, well, you have to, you know, take this into consideration. Well, you know, do you?
And, and I have to, to your point, Jim, though, of, we've already spent some of this money on something that in hindsight, we should, you know, we can't, we can't turn the clock back.
No.
But that money shouldn't have been spent without something being.
Yeah, so we'll get into the corner. Do we, do, are you saying, I mean, 'cause, 'cause I believe him. I believe that if we say no, he won't go forward. Then should we go back to the drawing board about the whole plan for the area?
I'll tell you what, I would, I don't, I'm concerned about basing my decision on trying to force them to do something else. I mean, I, I think that's a decision, if they wanna do it, they bring it back to us. But I, I don't feel, personally, I just don't feel comfortable trying to drive them to change something when they already have approval. I don't like it, but that was what other decision makers that were sitting where I'm sitting now said that was, that was a good deal, or that's what we, we're okay with it.
To me, that just, that just means that we're just gonna get along to life, so.
Yeah. What I can add, just a couple, couple things. The other aspect of a tax improvement district is the, within the project plan, are, it's basically, you know, project plan ends up being a wish list that's agreed upon with all the other taxing jurisdiction, jurisdictions. It doesn't mean that those things all are gonna happen or even need to happen.
Sure.
But they're eligible. And there's a big difference, this was talked about at the Finance Committee, a big difference between TID eligible, being in the plan, and TID feasible, where just because the improvements to Main Street were eligible, it didn't mean it was feasible, because it clearly wasn't. It put the TID in a terrible position. Having said that, the, the village likely needed those improvements and if it wasn't the TID paying for it, and right now the levy's picking it up, the levy would have been picking it up anyway. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't say, it doesn't look good on the bottom line, because the TID's losing out, but the village would be paying anyway. This was a way that if there was development, it could have paid that off. So I wouldn't necessarily say the village is in a, a bad spot. The TID just doesn't look good.
So another quick concern that I had was, you know, looking at this, this phase one, you know, they're right up against the road. There's, you know, no commercial that's, that's even, even feasible. I would almost like to see them switch phase one and phase two, where they would start on the kind of higher up harder terrain, which maybe would make me feel a little bit better about giving them some additional funds, because it is truly the harder spot to develop. But it would also allow, you know, across the street to still be open for potentially creating some sort of village corridor with commercial or, or something. So, I mean, he said it's, you know, it's a center part of our community. And I mean, that's true. And if, if we have perhaps easier to develop land for a commercial space, you know, right across the street here, if we reserved that for commercial as opposed to residential, then perhaps that would make it more attractive. And I don't know if it's feasible or, or even something that can be done, but I, I don't like phase one. That's, that's really kind of what it's coming down to for me.
I remember a discussion with the Plan Commission way back when it first came forward, that if he wants to build, he has to include the commercial component.
And it's back to way.
And this is way back, like with the first iteration of this. And he also mentioned building well, maybe half the units. And we said, well, no, if you want all the TIF, you've gotta build the whole project, not a half project, get the full TIF kind of thing.
Even a, a commercial residential mix like TID 1855, you know, that's, that's kind of what I, I saw for that space. And then once, once I started, you know, digging into the actual landscape, wait a second, this is nowhere near what I envision when they say commercial, you know, little tiny plot.
Right.
Right next to the, the bank, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Anything else for the future agenda?
Well, after that discussion, I feel kind of silly bringing this up, but Joint Fire needs a couple of citizen members.
At least one.
Oh?
One.
At least, yeah. So if anyone, if there was anyone with a interest in joint fire, that would be helpful, because right now it's just search and frustise.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Got a couple of people in line, we'll, we'll reach out, okay?
Anything else for future agenda? Otherwise, we can move on to a closed session, I guess. At this time, I'll make a motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, Paren I, Paren E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, conducting other specified business whenever competitive and or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Negotiate terms for potential development in Commerce Park and also the former lift station site on Viola's Road property and Wisconsin State Statute 1985, Paren I, Paren C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.